Okay.
Uh, yeah. Here we are.
Hey.
Say hi to the camera.
Thank you.
You got a hot mic? Okay, this is the monthly meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Dayton on November
twenty eighth.
Twenty eighteen. Board members of, I'm the chairman, Bob Adams. Greg Logan is the vice chairman. The secretary isn't here yet, but Jason Quinn, Jonathan, Gail, and Tim.
I forget my last name.
I do. Right. Okay. Let's start opening up the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First off, I wanted to make a statement at the beginning of the town, at the beginning of this meeting that anybody here present has a right to hear a decision on any of the decisions that we make at this board. If you are not a meat either butter or, and I just hear as our interest in the case, if you want to be notified, you should notify the secretary before leaving, but all of the butters will be notified by mail. And I'm telling you this so the board knows it as well. We haven't been doing this in the past, and this is what we've decided to do is it is in fact the law. Anything else? We're gonna bring in that first case of Center Street.
So I, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like some clarification. Are you, we do already notify the butters before the hearing?
Right, this is under decision.
This is after the decision comes in?
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna skip around here to go right to the Center Street case. You guys were familiar in this case, Zach was a voting member. He's not here tonight. Do we have to make a motion on anything? Yeah, we'll have to replace him when we get today. Do you want to replace him now? Who else? Tim, you were here and you're already a voting member.
I believe so.
Which one? Center Street?
Center Street. This is the one that had the detached accessory apartment.
Okay. I think I was there.
Yeah, you were.
Yeah.
The voting members were Zach, Jason, and Tim.
All right, so we're gonna have to replace Zach. I wasn't here for that, so I'm gonna regret it. Bob Adams.
I wasn't here either.
Okay, still, I'll step down and be the voting member for Zach. Okay, what has happened here is we had a, the petitioner has applied for their variance in a special permit. Under the present law, accessory apartment doesn't require a special permit, but we had issued that and they have paid the fee to have that done on the thing, and it does, it isn't necessary. In the short of it, it has to be corrected and fixed. So we have to make, we have to make a motion to refund their money.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you can make a motion to accept this letter into the record and also to make a motion to have their decision signed outside of a meeting.
So is this the, just for my clarity, we have Center Street here, is this the Cortlandt Road?
No, no.
Different, totally different, okay. Because I don't see the Center Street one.
No, it's not on it. This came into, they're writing a decision now on it.
Gotcha.
It came to the point from the attorney that special permits aren't required. That zoning law changed to allow for in-law apartments for less, accessory apartments.
Gotcha.
They changed it in 2014. We went by the original issue of the permit here and then it expired. And this all came, came together in between the actual changing of the law and having it approved through the state, through the attorney general's office. It slipped by.
Gotcha.
And we used that as a boilerplate to do this. You guys voted on it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
What has to be done is, we need to refund that money. Motion has to be made to refund their money on a special permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but at this time, would it be allowable to make a motion to refund monies to the petitioners of 150 Center Street?
Yes. To the petitioners?
Can I make a friendly interjection, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'm not sure. You're the petitioner, right?
Right.
We're gonna refund their money for the decision on a special permit because it wasn't required.
You need to do two things. I collaborated directly with Marguerite on this because Marguerite reached out to me to make sure her thought process was in line with the way the bylaw had changed. I did. I agree with what she said. This petitioner was before the, before the bylaw changed, under that old bylaw, she would have needed both relief, special permit, and a variance. The way the bylaw is written currently, that's no longer required. It's just the variance. So you need to make a motion to accept her withdrawal of the special permit, act on that, and then vote to refund her money. That way, the decision can only reflect the variance. This board didn't act on the special permit.
Okay, someone needs to make a motion that they withdraw without prejudice.
I make a motion that we refund the money for the set address of the...
First, we're gonna do the motion to withdraw the special permit.
Yeah, for the set address, for the special permit, not for the other applicants, just for the special permit.
I'll second that motion.
You okay with that wording?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have to make a motion to refund their money on the special permit application. There will be no butters part of it, Tim?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refund, what was it, $750 for the withdrawal of the special permit?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to put this letter in, admit it is, I wanna submit this letter into record?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, would you please read that letter?
Okay. It's dated today. It was, we were just informed this is tomorrow. And it says, Dear Board, it has come to our attention that during the decision-making process, the team discovered that due to the recent law change, we no longer need, we no longer required to have a special permit for the application 09-18, that's the number of the, we would therefore like to withdraw special permit application, and it's got the number, and request a refund of $750, and it's signed by, Maureen?
Mandy O'Donnell.
Not Mandy.
Sorry. Were you laughing okay?
No.
That's why my last submission was typed, just to throw that out there.
I thought I did pretty good the other day.
Yeah, it was good.
I even bounced over that, you didn't even know.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, this time, I'd like to make a motion that the board accept this letter from Mrs. O'Donnell.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're gonna, next case, case number 06-18, Cortlandt Road. The fee to return their request. They had withdrawn previous meeting. Oh, was it an October meeting?
Yes.
October seventeen.
October seventeen?
Yeah.
Now, is there, there isn't any time limit on that, is there?
I'm sorry, I was wrong.
To like, ask us to refund the money, there's no time limit?
No, that's a discretion of the board.
A discretion of the board.
Yeah, I, the only thing I would say is if the fiscal year ended, then it would be a problem to refund monies, so.
They withdrew without prejudice. We didn't make any decisions, nothing, and I have a problem, I haven't refunded.
Is it? Yeah. Yeah, it's enclosed, yeah, it's enclosed right here. Richard and Joel, Ellen, you know what? So all we're doing is just refunding the application?
Just, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refund the filing fee of $750 for cases 06-18, 0 Cortlandt Road. They withdrew their request without prejudice.
Second.
Anyone, any further discussion? Do we have that the voting members on?
I'm sorry?
We're gonna allow that letter into the record, right?
Their letter is already...
So this is good to go, like you have it?
My question is, who were the voting members? Do we need voting members to do this, or is it just the board itself? I don't know if Zach was part of it. No, it's just the board itself?
I don't think we, did we pick members because they withdrew before we, before it got to that point?
I don't think we actually did.
I just wanna try to keep it all.
I don't think a monetary discussion or vote needs to happen by the specific members.
I didn't, I wasn't sure. We covered while we were on the subject.
Can you second?
I think Mr. Ryan's did.
Second, if you second it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is, we wanted to, now that's to acceptance of Sylvia Way. And the new business, that was the one that I'm gonna... Bishop, you're up.
Yes, there is a bond that's being held by the board for Sylvia Way. Now, since now, the deed is, I mean, it's been accepted and the deed and the title search and all that's been done, and it's given to David Gay about it. I'm here to see what I need to do to get the bond released.
You need us to release the bond?
Yes.
I thought you were here to have us accept the road.
No, the road's been accepted.
Right, the town did that.
Right.
So, because that's what I was understanding this morning.
Mr. Chairman, we've already voted to accept the road.
But the town did.
Yes. It's gone to planning board, and then the town then voted for it. This is regarding the letter from David Gay, which should be part of your package.
Right, and he wants us to...
We did everything in his letter.
You've got all, you've read all of that?
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, he's got...
Have you submitted that to her?
No, I submitted it to David Gay.
Okay.
Because he, it was, it's like, the back title is like this bit with all the, and the meats and boughs and all that.
And it got everything he has?
With the deed to him, I mean, to the town, given to him.
This is the letter from David Gay right here.
What's the date on that letter?
November nineteenth.
August, and we got an October.
Yeah, I read it this morning, I read what you were asking for, and I could never remember all of the things that he was asking for.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of information, should there be any kind of a public meeting or disclosure or posting before the bond can be released to see if the residents agree that all of their requirements have been met?
I don't think there is, but that is a good question. What is your question?
What is my question?
Yeah, you're asking.
My question is, should there be a posting? Because there were several issues at the time when this came up for the road to be repaired or to be completed. There were several issues in discussion.
Is there anything mentioned in that in this letter from the law?
And this was just issued today, so there's no opportunity for the residents to be able to respond.
Hold on a second. What we're here to do is to sign on this is...
He's asking for a release of the bond.
Right, release of the bond.
If we release the bond, then that...
All right, and you're here telling me, are you gonna step down on this?
No, I'm not, I'm the other development, next door. That's where I'd have to step down. For this development separately, what I'm asking is, he's asking for a release of the bond, which on one level...
Well, as of today, he, if he's met these conditions here...
I think that's a different one though, Bob.
I'm only referring to Sylvia Way.
I haven't had a chance to read, this is the contact with South Sidewalk, which paper, this is the...
There's two different, there's...
At Stony Ridge.
Stony Ridge is...
At Stony Ridge.
That's the one I'm gonna, that's the one I'm gonna...
The only one that you, is this one I got.
That's the one I'm gonna recuse myself from and go to the side of the table.
You directed me to this particular folder here.
Yeah, it's Stony Ridge, Bob, sorry.
That's the...
Mr. Chairman?
That does make a difference.
Mr. Chairman, I believe what we're gonna be discussing is the funds listed in the letter, and the letter is regarding the acceptance of Sylvia Way as a public way, file number 791.40C, and it was received November nineteenth. There is also another letter attached to that from October sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, also discussing the public way.
I'm not sure what paper that, a million of them, Stony Ridge?
Yellow.
Okay. Yeah, when we spoke this morning, this was about accepting the road, it did nothing about release of a, of a bond. Now, you're asking us, and you've come up with something that came, you said was filed today? I don't know. And the people aren't here to represent, I don't know where it might go.
No, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, the road, the road was voted already to be released. Bishop's completely correct about that. But the bond, what I'm asking, because Bishop is asking that a bond be, that the bond be released.
Which means, which means a hundred percent done.
Which means a hundred percent done. So my quest, my concern is, were there other items on that list besides the road that have not been approved yet by the town?
Not that I know of. Tonight, everything has been completed, to the best of my knowledge. Now, unless somebody's got something else and, oh, I don't, I've been, you know, connected.
Should there, like, but I guess what I'm asking is, is should there be a public notice before the bond is released to give the residents an opportunity to respond?
To do that. I don't know that is, you're asking me, I can't...
I'm asking for, I'm not sure, that's what I'm, I'm fairly new here.
In my opinion, no, we've never, we don't do that. The bond is, they gotta, the town's already accepted the road, so we, we just gotta go and release his money. The town's accepted it. It's been accepted, so you can't change what's already been accepted.
Well, do you have to accept the road?
They already accepted.
They already accepted it at the town meeting, at a special town meeting.
They did. They, they accepted the road within a town, in a previous meeting, and recommended that the town accepts the road. The zoning board did.
At that point, the, everything has been completed, so what you're asking...
I'm just asking if everything on that list for completion, for release of the bond, was specifically tied into the road. If there were other issues on the bond...
It was done prior to the...
Those were all done prior to us approving?
That's what I'm asking, I don't know.
Yes. I, I, I can't answer a question, I don't know either, I don't have the answer.
Those were all approved by us, before, before the match.
Okay.
We've got the town engineers going out there and done all this research on it.
You gave it a list, went through.
There were some concerns with certain things, he, Bishop, addressed those matters, came back, you've got letters saying it's all said.
That's what I'm asking.
You were before us, I believe, a few months ago with a punch list, and I was led him to the punch list of...
I concur with that.
We got, yes. We got the answers.
They got rights, I don't know what to tell you. They have it.
They don't have a...
I don't...
Until just now, I didn't know you were trying to get money released from us. I just thought we were supposed to accept what is already been accepted and go on with it, because it was supposed to be the zoning board that, we governed it on 40B.
Right. I think they're, if I may, Mr. Chairman, they're intertwined, because once Attorney Gay's office is satisfied that all the requirements have been met, then this board is now relinquishing the bond to, back to the developer, because the road now becomes ours. So I think they have it simultaneously.
In nine days.
Right. So I think the question at hand is, has everything that Attorney Gay recommended been done? You say yes.
Have they received anything from Attorney Gay?
That, that needs to be quantified through Attorney Gay's office.
Yeah, right here.
A letter that I just read.
All right, well, I'm gonna need time to read it. If you could point it out to me, it would speed things up here.
It's the letter that says, regarding acceptance of Sylvia Way as a public way, file number 791.40C, November nineteenth. That is the response from David Gay regarding Bishop's punch list that he worked through most recently, regarding the title and...
Well, where does it say that it's all been met? So I don't have to read the whole thing? If it's not there, it's not there.
Pretty much the letter.
Okay.
If you read the paragraph down. I'll read the whole thing, but you're gonna have to wait.
This is important, Mr. Chairman, take your time.
Want me to read it out loud?
Yes, please.
Okay, therefore, as a matter of title, I am satisfied that the conveyance by PMJD Realty LLC to the town will establish clear title to Sylvia Way with the town of Dayton. I thank you also for your certificate of good standing. Look at that. Yeah, it's pretty much that in a nutshell. So do we need a motion?
Do we have to...
If you're willing, you release.
Do we have to pick voting members on that, or no?
Currently, there are no voting members.
Yes, we have to, we have to pick three, or Greg has to pick three.
Yeah, this is the final, yeah. You know, Williams did that last week, last, last night.
I have three members.
I pick Tim Ryan's, Jason Quinn, and Greg Logan.
Okay, so we'll have to take a motion that the release of the bond governing Sylvia Way be released. Somebody's gonna make that motion.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to release the bond on Sylvia Way.
Any further discussion?
Should we put the file number, case number on there as well?
Yeah, what is the...
I don't have it.
File number 791.40C.
Okay, I'll check.
I second that motion.
Somebody second it?
Yeah, Greg did.
Okay, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along.
Congratulations, board developer, we got one off of us.
By the way, this is the first 40B project that completed a bond release.
There you go.
In the town of Dayton.
Who's buying drinks later?
Yeah, yeah, party's on me.
Wasn't there one here for a release on, you have, don't you have something else with us?
I do. I do.
I didn't think I was...
Oh, you, yeah, you guys are not know with me.
We can rip it off.
All right.
Okay, what are we gonna do?
Three.
Stony Ridge, discuss cost to complete and release of lot number forty.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, because I have some comments I wanna make, and I live at Stony Ridge, I'm gonna recuse myself from this and go to the outside of the table, and stay here and recuse myself and make comments. Doesn't matter to me.
You can stay right where you are.
Okay.
He doesn't have to step off the board, does he?
Okay. But I can't vote on it.
You can't vote?
No, but I just wanna make that clear.
Voting members for this case?
And I am recusing myself.
Yeah, we probably are.
May I present to you what I would like?
Let me get the board members' pick.
I'm gonna pick Bob Adams, Tim Ryan's, and Jason Quinn.
The cost to complete...
Is there a case number on this? No.
No.
What I'm here before you is, for is, the road has been, a lot of work has been done on the road for phases three and four. Actually, it's pretty much completed, except for some trees. And even though I, I believe the GZA estimate is overpriced, and we don't pay $500 a tree, but that's fine. His, his, his estimate is $106,000 to finish it.
This is Peter?
This is him, GZA.
Peter Williams.
Yeah, that's his estimate.
That's all that's left, $106,000.
On the whole, a whole subdivision.
All we have here is, we're holding six lots.
Correct.
Bishop's, he's asking for relief on one lot.
Actually, I would like to go for two, if I may?
No, I'm not going there.
Why?
Discuss it with Marguerite. We're gonna release one, and when she, after that, let me finish. She wants you to come up with a different type of surety thing. When that's complete, there's, release the second one.
I thought she said you're, she wants you to hold four.
No, she never said that to me.
That's her letter. Okay, but, but, but really, it's, is it her decision or your decision?
I discussed this with you too.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to reason with you that if, regardless of what Marguerite says, you as a board...
That is my understanding with her, that she wants that...
But she's not the board, you are.
I know.
So what I'm saying is...
Well, we do deal with her recommendations, sir.
Okay, so if you, I mean, it's, it's your decision whether you, whether she, you know, whether I, well, it doesn't matter what I say. It's what you say is what matters. But I'm trying to present my case to you. There's $100,000, $106,000 left on the road. Each lot, even taking the minimum, according, in her letter...
Ninety thousand.
Ninety to 220, let's take the minimum. That's 90,000, so two lots, there's 180, which more than covers this.
Isn't there a contingency you have to meet as well?
Okay, there's another lot.
Yeah.
There's a contingency.
Yeah.
There's three lots, and, and just out of the air, let's do four lots. So, I mean, what I'm, I mean, again, it's your decision to do, whatever you decide, I'm happy to go with. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I have to go with.
I don't understand what Greg just said to you about something in contingency, meaning three lots. What is, what do you mean by that?
Right here, this very last paragraph is from Marguerite, that letter right down there, talks about what she's recommending.
Yes, right.
Basically, contingency equals another lot.
Another lot.
Another lot.
So, 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 even, even four lots would be $360,000, which is, no matter what contingency you're talking about, is three times, more than three times, it's three and a half times that was left.
I agree with you.
Okay.
There's what, six lots left?
Yeah, six lots.
Each one of them would be roughly $600,000, roughly, if at 106,000 apiece. The point is, she wants you to come up with a type...
No, no, I will, I will.
And we're willing to release you, the one, now you're coming here asking for two.
No, no.
I know the numbers, and I'm familiar with that, but we work towards her...
That's fine.
And that was her, her advice to the board, that we hold those five lots until you come up with that.
All right.
And it's nothing personal, Bishop.
No, no, I understand, I'm not taking it personally at all.
But I'm not gonna hire an attorney and spend the money and have her give us a recommendation and not go with her recommendation. Now, the board is, that's, you know, that's my feeling on it. I don't have, you, we're doing this because you have a sale.
No, no, I appreciate, and I appreciate that.
Any of those affordable lots that we're holding?
No. That's the thing, that's the thing, they're all...
There could be one, right? According to the letter, but... Yeah, there could be, but it doesn't have to be.
I, I, see, all, all the affordable lots have been built and sold and delivered.
Right.
Okay, so, which is, which is normally a burden on the developer to get it out of the way, because affordable lots, you know, they lose money, so builders tend to delay that. But we got that out of the way like a while ago.
Right.
So, but, again, I...
That being said, now, are you working on what we have for Peter, with Peter's, are you working on with the GZA second, on the road?
No, I can't right now, because trees, right now, we cannot plant.
Okay.
And the rest of them really are, are, are on phase five, which I'm building a lot of houses still, so I don't wanna build them and destroy them. But everything up until there, except for trees and minor stuff, are done. No, I'm not, I'm not working on the road right now.
Okay, because that was one of the things I know she was concerned with as well. In her letter, her last paragraph was talk to you in regards to what we're gonna do with the $106,000. It's still outstanding on the road. What your, what your plan was, what you're gonna do about it?
My plan is, I mean, as anybody will attest, anything that's possible to be done, I do. I don't wait till, oh, the last minute.
I'm just reading what, I'm reading off the list.
Yeah, so, but, but see, she, she, she doesn't have a field experience, she has a, a legal experience, which is vast. But she doesn't really know how the, the field happens.
Did you plant any trees over there, Bishop?
Oh, I, we did. Oh, a lot of trees. But sixty-four trees that he's talking about are for, for, for the house that...
That's what she's talking about, okay.
Yeah, but that's...
No, no, I'm understanding it now, I'm here.
If I build, if I put them now, they're gonna be destroyed, where we do the septic systems and the driveways. But everything that is not in, in phase five...
So what I'm just saying is, according to what I'm reading, is she wants to have a plan, which you're telling us.
My plan is, the minute the house, the foundations are poured, I mean, like in phase four, the houses were not completed, but the foundations were poured. I finished the road, I finished the sidewalk, I finished the trees and all that.
Trees are gonna be dealing with winters, so you're probably gonna wait till spring.
The spring. And not only spring, even when spring comes, if the houses are not built, which, that's market dependent, I can't really plant trees because they will be in stroke.
All right.
But in any case, we're talking all of that, $100,000. We have, right now...
That's work left to complete, 100%.
Everything, okay?
And you're saying you can do it cheaper than that budget?
But no, let's, let's not go there.
You're just...
Yes, I definitely can, I, I definitely can and will. But let's not go there, let's take, assume this number.
Take it for face value, yeah.
And let's add whatever she put for contingency, okay? So even, let's add 50%.
I got you, $160,000.
There's $160,000, all right? We have four lots, that's at the least, which, I mean, there's no lot, if you find a lot for 90,000, subdivision lot for 90,000, let me know about it.
That's 360 at the minimum.
Yeah, so, I mean, the town is well, well protected, and, and I've shown the town that I do, I fulfill my obligations. So, but, again, I make the case to you that it is fair to release two, but if you do, if it's in your wisdom, you don't...
Bishop, we hire guys like Peter Williams, we hire Marguerite for their expertise, we have him for an expertise, we have this board that we deal with.
But you can't blame me for making arguments.
No, no, and I'm just telling you what we're, what we're dealing with.
Sure, I understand.
One of the things, like, they're not fucking saying that you don't do your job, because it does clearly say, as at this point, he's met all the requirements going forward, coming down. But the concerns that they were having was one, the tree warden, they wanted to have him out there, I don't know if you knew about that, wanting to know about the trees, which but the concerns that they were having was one, the tree warden, they wanted to have him out there, I don't know if you knew about that, wanting to know about the trees, which you just explained to us. Um, also, the other thing that I'd seen on there was, is before we go and release any lots, what's the plan, which you're going over now with this board? Those are the concerns that Marguerite had, so it's not saying that, she's not telling us to release all, you know, what you're asking, but what I'm telling, say is, you're explaining to us now the plan, which is gonna go on record, that the plan is, that they're gonna try to do X, Y, Z by this date, and at this time, when the, obviously, trees we know can't be done until spring, or whenever it can be done, going forward, those are the answers, questions that she just asked us in the very last paragraph to come up with. That's what we're trying to reach out to you about now.
Okay.
So, just for my clarification, is it, it's five lots or six lots?
Right now, the town's holding six lots, and I have, these are the lot numbers, I have Mark working, so, so, right now, these six lots.
Okay, I, I misread it, so it will, it will leave us holding five, if we're going to accept one.
If you release one, you believe we're holding five.
My question is, why didn't you ask me for two when you had this conversation with me last week, because I went to Marguerite with the one, I would've done it with the two. But this is what she gave back as an answer.
At that time, Bob, I didn't have the, the cost to complete, I didn't know what, what, what GZA is gonna cover.
You know, you made a good argument with the cost and the amount, and it was, the town's holding far more than, with the values leaned against your property, but she wants, like Greg said, some type of plan, and until I could contact her, unless she's.
No problem, no problem.
Come back next month, or we'll try to.
Would it be fair if we get back next month, for, to release the next one?
What I was gonna suggest, Bob, also, is, is we're talking in phases one and two right now, correct?
No, we're talking, uh, this is lot, uh, phase five.
Because if you read the next page.
Phase five.
Three and five, all but four lots can be released.
That's, that's, that's what, that, that's what she had told me.
So, that's where, so I wanna get it all cleared up now, so, according to the record, that's dated October fourteenth, two thousand fifty, when did you talk to Marguerite, Bob, just an idea? Was it back in October?
No, this is last Wednesday, you called me last Wednesday, and I called her, because she was supposed to be going on vacation, I left the message.
You guys, I want you guys to be there.
She called her up and got it, uh, the, segregation was pretty, was she in the call, sorry. Called and, and made the arrangement, got in contact with Peter Williams on the one thing, got him to come through on the one, and, that's it, one, that's my feeling on it.
Because at this time, it's my recommendation that the board release in, not release any further lots in phase one and two, okay?
Phases one and two are already to release on.
And that it releases all but four lots in phases three, four, and five.
That's what I'm.
So, we're on the same page.
It's consistent, it's consistent with what I'm asking.
Okay, but now, what I'm going on is, also, the language requires, after the fact, that we follow up with this, this Peter Williams. We've done that, his report is one hundred and six thousand dollars plus contingency of ten, that's a hundred and sixty thousand. We're saying lots are going for, what, ninety thousand per, in most places, so if we held three, we're way over what we need to do, on that, on that phase. And what are you asking us for really for, and how much, how many houses you want?
I, I'd like to get two released, which leaves four, not three with the town, four. Uh, so, so, you know, I feel the town is way protected, but again, you know, you.
All right, help us out, let's get some input here from the board, what's your feeling on that?
Well, you, do we have to do some public input on this matter too, as well?
Yes.
You wanna do that now, Bob?
Do public input first, that's.
Yeah, let's do some public input.
I forgot the Jonathan.
Okay, so, switching my other, my other.
Putting your other hat on.
I'll open it to the public.
I have a public hat on here.
State your name and your address.
My name is Jonathan Gale, twenty-two Waterford Circle, Dayton, Massachusetts, oh two seven one five, phone number, forget it. Fisher has it already, but, in all, in all seriousness, here, here is my concern, um, as speaking specifically as a resident. As a resident, there are a number of common area issues, and when I say common area, I mean, public access areas, issues, that have not been addressed and repeatedly requested by the residents to address those areas, and the common areas, for example, there are benches which are there, which are broken, and have been for several months, and there's been repeated requests to his customer service folks to, to repair them, they go unanswered. There's a storage shed that has been broken into and is open and exposed, not addressed repeatedly. There are light, there are lights in the development, um, and as, as the person who picked me up tonight can attest, the lights in the development are not working, are not working properly, and need to be readdressed, those have been addressed several times and not repaired. But most importantly at this point, is this letter that we, we received today, that talks about the road services being done so far. Fisher is correct, that recently, there was another part of the road surface which comes from, you know, that, uh, phase three area, um, going most of the way around the, the back of an oval, was surfaced and so forth, however, the day that was surfaced, was about two weeks after it was raked clean, or ten days after it was raked clean, and it poured the night before, so there were puddles along the sides and so forth. And, now, I'm saying this because I'm blind, and I wanna make that clear, but a sighted person driving through there, would see that the pavement along the edges is already cracking, it's peeling, it's bubbling, and it's pebbled, and that's along the edges where the curbing are, and along the edges where it curves around all the driveways, is uneven and bulging. So, that surface wasn't done correctly, and may need to be redone, and what I'm suggesting is that before any lots are released, this be revisited.
This is in section what?
This is in, um, this would've started at, what, twenty Waterford, coming all the way around, roughly, at the corner.
Jonathan, he still has enough houses to cover, I'm pretty sure anything that could be.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand that he wants a sale, and he wants, I realize that, but I think, if, if this is gonna be approved by the board tonight, there needs to be a contingency in this draft, that before anything else approved, all of these things have to be addressed. If they're not addressed, and then includes the road surface before any more lots are released.
Jonathan, he asked till the end of the project to finish any of the things.
But he's saying that this part of the road surface is completed.
Can I respond?
I don't know, what did Peter Williams have to say on this?
Exactly.
Well, what I'm, well, I, I, I know what Peter Williams is going on during the daytime, and he's doing his inspection, obviously, you wouldn't see that lights weren't working at the proper times that would go up. There's few things that I'm sure Peter didn't see, um, but we can make a recommendation to Peter, to go out there, and I recommend that he goes out there, takes a look at the concerns that he has. Um, if there's a concern, we can add it to the budget.
Right.
However, being hold the amount of road that he has to repair, and the amount of monies that we're holding on, I know we're within that, so we gotta keep a close line that we do not release everything that we need to release on that.
And that's really ongoing with this.
But I do believe, Bishop, we'll, we will take care of these issues.
So, what we should do here, or what I recommend that we do, is we approve this, because we have pretty much done this with the, the, uh, understanding of our attorney, and worked this out, because there's still five more lots, but add what Jonathan said before, the other one that you're asking for, that these conditions be addressed by Peter Williams and.
Will I have the opportunity to respond?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, regarding, uh, uh, Jonathan is bringing two point, or, two points, really, you can, you can put them in two different buckets. One is the common areas, and, and, and for that, we, the common areas, like the benches and, and, and in the park, we, what, we do them, I mean, but then, the.
Homeowners Association.
I was gonna say, is that on the homeowners association?
Exactly, and the reason why, they're, they're calling us to fix them, well, but there is no money in the budget right now, okay, so we, there will be, but, you know, we were addressing all the landscaping issues, the, the, the money is coming, and we're gonna fix it, the reason why we don't respond is because normally, this, because we did it once, we delivered it to them, but the maintenance. Yeah, and then, and then, and then the homeowners is supposed to do it, now, of course, if the homeowner doesn't have enough money, I do it, anyway.
What is the holdup on the homeowners association?
He is the homeowners association.
I know he is, I understand that.
There, there is no holdup, they, they have monthly, there, there's monthly income coming, and, and, you know, we try not to spend their money unnecessarily, because the minute we fix it, teenagers will jump, come and jump on it and break it, so, so we're trying to be a little bit wise, and because we got complained, oh, how come the entrance doesn't have, uh, flowers? Well, if you guys wanna pay for flowers, I'm happy to do flowers, we sent them that letter, and the same thing for lights, I mean, we, we did the lights, and we kept changing them, and, so, but, so, so the common areas, um, the reason why we, we have not really addressed all the issues is because the budget is limited, you know, and.
Like, like I say, um, I mean, wouldn't you think that that storage shed would be something you definitely wanna keep locked regardless?
But it is a lock, but, but what happened is, somebody broke it.
Alright, and the benches, um, how long do you warranty your?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, before I, what, before I turn it over to them.
Yes.
Because I don't want him to be responsible for it, I'm gonna do it again, but I don't wanna keep doing it five times.
I know what you're saying, but you do.
Well, the warranty, the warranty stuff's only covered, it doesn't cover.
I'm not saying about vandalism, that's totally different.
From the point, from the point of the contract.
Yes.
From the point of the contract, if he's already delivered this, it'll be the same as someone if he bought the house, he delivered it with good gutters on it, and then later on, the gutters, for some reason, or they fell off.
I understand that, but in this case, he's the homeowners association, he collects these.
You are, I'm not the.
We are not, we are not a homeowners association yet.
Yes, you are.
We don't have a voting say.
Absolutely.
In this point.
You, you, you don't, but you have, you have, you pay into it, you own it, I am the trustee on it, but.
But if you're the trustee.
I run it on, uh, with a fiduciary responsibility to you, if I, if anything I do wrong, like I steal money, or, or I.
But that's different, we're talking about up, using the homeowners association fees.
Yeah.
To keep the, the development, which if we were an independent association, because you completed the project, you're right, then it's our responsibility as the fiduciary. So, in the meantime, it's your responsibility as the fiduciary.
Okay, I mean, my responsibility as a homeowner, I, I wear two hats. Exactly.
I understand you're wearing two hats, I realize that, I think, I think that, you know, I, I don't have a problem with you wearing the two hats.
Right.
And I understand that that's gonna be the way, it is until the development is fully finished and turned over.
Right.
What I'm saying is, because you are wearing both hats, you have to, in the interim period, while we're under development, take the responsibility for seeing that these things are taken care of and that they're addressed, whether, whether they're a maintenance hazard, or, for example.
And if there's no money, if there is no money in the budget, what do I do, make a special assessment, I'm happy to do that.
You tell me where that comes from, it's still, you still have to finish.
It will have to be assessed to this homeowners association.
Right now.
That's part of the agreement.
And homeowners do, we do get an assessment, we get an assessment twice a year.
But it's part of the, well.
That's the fee, it's not an assessment.
Anything can, anything can happen and come up that would fall under the homeowners association in the course of any year, or any given length of time.
And that, and it might be an assessment, or if we, if we had control and something happened, for example, and there had to be, it'd have to be a special assessment.
I can tell you, you've got strong feelings about this issue.
The reason, the only reason I have strong feelings about it, and I agree with Fisher, i.e., for example, benches, you know, a lot of kids come and, and destroys things.
The best thing you can do is, oh, if you prepare the, and meet your.
I think, but in any case, just put it into perspective.
I need you on here, Jonathan.
Anything we're talking about, everything we're talking about, doesn't add up to more than like four thousand dollars.
But.
Put it into perspective, let me talk about the second.
You have more than enough.
The second issue, which is saying that, oh, was paved with the wrong conditions, GZA was present when we paved. He was present, when, he saw it, when, we don't wanna go with, with, you know, a, a layman, a layperson's, which I consider myself one, too, I mean, I'm not insulting anybody.
No, it's okay, I don't take it, I can't even see it.
We don't wanna go with a layperson's assessment, we wanna go with a professional assessment.
Peter Williams.
He was on site, he saw it, he saw it after it rained, and, 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 and there is a ten percent, and, and.
Just twenty.
What's that? No, 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 on top, on top of that, after everything is done, and you release everything, read, uh, uh, Marguerite's letter, there's ten percent being held for a year after that.
For retainers.
As a retainer, and, oh, by the way, phases one and two have been done for more than a year, for more than two years, okay?
But the, the, one of the things that I do believe that needs to be addressed is the lights, um, and Peter wouldn't see that until he goes there at night. So, what's going on with the lights, is, do you have, familiar with what's going on?
I'm not familiar with, I, I was familiar with one problem, we addressed it, and this, there's still a problem, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, so, what's the?
But, I mean, so, so you send an electrician for, I mean, three hundred bucks and you fix it.
I understand that, but.
But I'm happy to do that, but I wasn't aware that was in.
And I can tell you this too, Jonathan, this developer, of all the developers we've had, whenever we've given him a problem, he's addressed it.
I'm, I've, I've known Fisher for a few years now, and on other things related to me personally, he's been very good, I'm not saying that he's not, and that they're not a good company.
I can see no reason why we should, he has a chance, opportunity to finish his problem.
So, in, in, in any case, I think, I, I mean, I know, I know you people trust, trust us, but you don't need to go and trust, trust and verify. In any case, there is plenty of funds to cover any eventual, even twice the eventual, even, you know, repaving the whole road, as, as Jonathan was suggesting might happen, there's plenty of money to do that, the whole, paving, paving the whole road.
But after you.
I just paid it, I just paid the bill, forty-one thousand dollars, okay, and another forty thousand, you know, it's, it, there's so much beef left on the table, there is no exposure.
We're not disputing that, I'm, I'm tired of disputing that, we know that, that's.
Can you fix the clock, please?
There's more than enough money here, okay, and the issues that he's made.
I just, I want them out there.
Before you come back.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before you come back in December, because I said, you said you wanted them, another, uh, we're gonna be meeting in December.
I'm not gonna.
I would like you.
Sure.
To speak with Marguerite and get her opinion on it, because she was pretty thorough on wanting to have something in plan before we release any.
I'm not gonna come back, if you people, if you, if you feel that it's fair with all of that to release only one lot, I'll go with that, I feel it's fair to do, to release two. You make the decision, if you see with one, I'll stick with one, I'm not gonna come back, the next time I come back, I'm gonna be posting a bond, I'm not gonna fiddle over a lot here and there, I'm gonna be posting a bond, and, and get it done, and release all of them, and, but, because I frankly disagree with ninety percent of Marguerite, and I'm not gonna sit down and argue with, I, I disagree violently with ninety percent that she's mentioning, it, in her letter, okay, because she's saying, oh, you have to put, you have to leave the bond on, on the whole five phases, well, what about the first two phases that have been sitting there for two years, finished, plowed, done, nothing hap, wrong happened, okay? What about that, why don't we just forget about that, call it done, um, so, there is so many different things, so I don't wanna argue with anybody.
Okay, then end it now.
It's ended.
Alright, I wanna entertain a motion as to whether we allow him to have one or two, two, now, the board's, you know, input on this, that doesn't have to be a voting member, and he had asked for one, and tonight came in asking for two, there is clearly enough product left there to cover whatever will come up in the, in the holding of the four, but it was that the advice of the attorney to only do one.
Bob, can I ask one question, reading what Marguerite wrote here on the forty B regulations, and you are stating, Bishop, there is no affordability that are left being held right now. For more than one affordable, although if the developer prefers, is approximately, for all four remaining retained lots to be marked rate houses, too. Finally, a note to be forward to board, agrees to release any further, it discussed with the developer, comments and recommendations, which we did about, what Peter Williams did, which we already did. We all know math, doing what, what he's stating, what's left on the board, what's there, and what's this man's doing, I'm, me personally, I'm okay with two.
What, um, what have you guys done in the past in this situation, prior to me coming on board on the zone?
This is the first one you ever completed, he did.
Well, at least.
I'll tell you what, what in the past has happened, the, the way they've treated me, um, they, they, they figured out enough lots to cover the number, and they add one more lot.
Right.
Okay, so, that's what they've done in the past, the board has, okay, so, what I'm saying is, if you go by that rule, three lots are enough. But because Marguerite feels that, uh, you, I mean, I, I disagree with that, but if she, if she feels, and you have to go by her recommendation, that you should hold four, that's fine, but five, I don't see any reason why, but again, I really, I, I, you know, and, and I would suggest to you that you should reward good behavior.
At the same time, I don't wanna set a precedent for us going against, uh, advice of the attorney.
We'll give you a sticker.
I put it down in the, in the record that we do reward good behavior, would be a, a good thing.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
I, I, I do, um, I, I concur with everything that's been said, um, I, I, I have respect for Marguerite, uh, her and I have differed a little bit on this as well.
Yep.
Um, I think holding the lots, in my opinion, is the holy grail, uh, especially, you know, in this town, in this market.
Yeah.
Um, we have always held plus one for insurance, so what's been said here, I think we're getting plus two, quite frankly, uh, at four.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is, I'd like to see this project done, every time we hold up the developer by way of holding up a lot, we.
We keep bringing him back every other, every couple months.
Let's just get this thing done, I, I guarantee he'll be the second forty B that's done in this town before anybody, anybody else. So, um, I, I'm fine with the four, uh, knowing the legality, the monetary, and the development, so.
Just about shot me on, huh?
Please, I, I don't oppose anyway, um, I come with, with peace.
Okay, if that's the case, uh, we'll need a motion, but I do want it to have, uh, the issues that Jonathan addressed, I want that to be part of the condition, and you address those.
So, it sounds like, sounds like you should make the motion, then?
No, I'm not, I'm the chairman, I can't make it.
I can't make the motion?
I'll step down and make the motion.
No, but, I mean, don't make it a condition to release those.
No, I'm gonna make a motion upon completion, that these things are taken care of.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll take care of it, I mean, what, it's not.
I hope you do.
I will.
Completion of that phase. You're gonna continue in this town, we, we know where you are.
I'll come back to you with a bigger project, guys, so, you, you, there's a kid in front of me.
Don't be scaring me now, don't be scaring me.
So, so, in theory, I can, we can make the motion to release the two lots, contingent upon him completing those.
Well, can, please don't make a contingent, if you're gonna make a contingent, give me that one, because, because I need that ones, uh, uh, for closing next week.
Fair enough. I'm trying to think of how I wanna word it.
That's why, that's why he addressed it and brought it to us, cause there is a closing being held up.
Right.
Well, if he says it's only $300, couldn't you make a contingent upon every, those other items, the exception of the road? Those other, the other items should be-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So make a contingent upon the-
The other items that I mentioned.
The lights, the storage shed.
Lights, the storage shed, and the benches. And the clock, less the road.
Cause you're saying he was there. So I'm confident if Peter was there, that it's something that maybe-
And he was, and he-
I'd like, I'd like, I can't see, but I'd like to be able to walk through Peter.
It's all about, you're not gonna get a rose from that sometimes.
So no, everything, the, the other items, you know, the, you have the benches that can be done within a week, or, or different type?
The benches are not gonna be done.
Okay, well, the electric, okay, so let's focus on the electric.
Two days are getting another rainy day.
Okay, so you have, so you have the lights and you have a clock.
Why should they be done in a week?
And the storage. You said it, you said it.
I'll make an effort to do them as soon as possible.
We're not gonna have this. It's not gonna be done in a week.
Right.
I'm only asking about the lights and the benches.
Same thing. I don't wanna, they don't wanna hold a, I don't wanna do a contingent upon-
I don't either. No, I want, I trust, I trust that you will.
I will.
Okay.
I mean, there are so many ways-
You need to move on. You need to make a motion here, not- All right?
Yeah, just, just so you understand that you still are in control, you need to sign off on building permits before I can issue them. So if there's any problem with-
He got me there.
We hold a golden, golden egg, right?
You cannot sign a building permit in the future if Fisher does not keep to his word.
Okay.
Okay? I don't think you need to make a contingent on the law.
Perfect, okay.
That's right, because it's gonna be on that paper.
Rock and roll.
And then move it to-
We have that control now, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman-
Thank you for that.
Stonefish, I guess.
You are, you are.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to release two lots.
Do you have numbers on the lots? Cause she's gonna need that, am I right?
Yes.
What else is it?
Lots number forty and-
Thirty six.
Release lots number forty and thirty six.
Was there something else you wanted to? Marguerite wanted on that? Was there something else besides the lot numbers? Was there something else that pertained to those lots specific to them? I don't think there was. I might just, all right, I might've been thinking of something else, right? You just need to know the lots that are gonna be released.
Correct.
But now, do they need to sign it now, or? This is the F1 form. Normally, normally, that's what happens. You sign it that night, if you vote, whatever you vote on.
Okay, now we need the motion.
So I made the motion. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to release two lots for the Stony Ridge 40B, lots number forty and thirty six.
I'm supporting that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And you have my solemn promise that I will continue cooperating to the maximum I can.
If not, I'll send Bob after you.
And I will take care of those items, Jonathan. I, and, and I didn't know that the light is still, there's an issue with the lights.
So we do sign this right now?
I'll, I'll make sure. Actually, I'm gonna drive right now, just as you-
You have the lights and the clock, the clock.
The clock. We'll take care of the clock.
And like that forever? I mean, if you can get something that-
Those are simple things, Fisher, to keep the residents happy.
Sure.
You know, including me.
See, man, this is what is called an F1. This is what they refer to as an F1. Right there on the thing. They kept referring to it in emails. Them are having a hell of a time with emails, trying to get their rights ordered. They're coming in. I'm working on it.
A lot of kids come in from outside.
The polls being taken.
So, I mean, I understand, no, I understand that. And they come in with skateboards and other things.
You ain't gonna do that.
No, I thought it was a campaign.
My kids have been trying to-
The bench just didn't have the same kids.
You don't know how folks are just before. You have no idea. You know, the reason is- As bad as I can be, I'm gonna, some of this stuff is deeper than I ever wanted to get into. With laws are requiring, I mean, look at how, how formed now. We used to have a paper like this. I'm gonna build this. I filled out, I did my addition. I gave like what I roughed up, when it was, who was his name back then? It was big. George Perry was about buildings. I must've seen his name come up. So, you know, you give him the picture of the thing, and it had the side dot setbacks, whatever it was, just streetlight and gone.
His son, um-
I don't know if there's a way you found-
He's a little older, retired and stuff. But he came to see me and he asked me if I know his dad. I don't. He didn't know his dad.
So, did he say that, or is it anything else?
No, those are the big-
Took that as a compliment.
Yeah, he was a good guy.
Thank you, thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.
Okay, moving right along now.
Thank you.
What number were we on? Three. So we're going to four. Discussing editing of new application. Okay, is this where you wanna come on board, Nicole?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Just give me one moment.
Take your time.
You know, they brought pizza in.
I know.
I just got a big whiff of it and-
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm ordering a pizza when you're on your own.
So, Mr. Chairman on board, in your packets, there is a copy of the application that we discussed at our last meeting. But attached to that packet, there should be copies of Mass General, Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law. I've highlighted the parts that we were discussing at our last meeting regarding the variance and the special permit timelines. So I'll, I'll just read that to you, if that's okay. Section 10.10, lapse of special permit or variance. Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, states that if the rights authorized by a variance are not exercised within one year of the date granted of such variance, such rights shall lapse. So variance is one year. And on the, special permit is talked about on this thing.
Next page.
Oh, the second page, there's another section I highlighted. The Supreme Judiciary Court rules that a variance must be recorded in order to be exercised, and that failure to record within 12 months allotted by general law, FOIA, Section 10, is, is fatal error. In addition, the court clarified steps necessary to exercise. Here, Cornell also noted, there's a whole case that they discuss in here, needed to obtain a building permit or convey one of the lots in reliance of the variance to satisfy the requirement. So my understanding of that is that it needs to be recorded, built upon, or-
I think it's gonna be recorded and permitted.
Right.
Not built.
Yes.
Permitted, correct.
Right.
Second section, the smaller section, as to special permits, Mass General Law, Chapter FOIA, Section 9, states that ordinances or bylaws shall provide that a special permit granted under this section shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years. If a substantial use thereof has not commenced except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. So my understanding of that is special permits are allowed for two years, variances are allowed for one, upon the exercise.
Quite the difference in areas.
I don't know.
That's why I touch in.
I knew there was a control. Which one was longer?
The third page, I'll just read it, cause I highlighted it. The appeals court rules that where a special permit was granted but not recorded, the permit didn't, did not lapse where the land was used for nine years as allowed by the special permit. Mass General Law, Chapter FOIA, Section 10, also makes provisions for the extension of this period for a period not to exceed six months. So I believe that goes to our extension form of the party. So that, I believe clarifies our questions regarding the application.
It's only on special permit, though.
Yes, in regards to that.
This is, this point is the first time. You can apply for an extension within a year of the time of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there a limit on how many times you can apply?
I believe it was once we did that.
Just once.
I forgot the Dr. Seuss, was that it?
No, it was up on Williams Street, up on Center Street.
That's what it was.
Behind, I can't remember the name of the people.
Just, just while we're talking about all this, I'll throw one other into the mix. There's only one other way that these can be extended, and that's through an act of the governor. It was the Permit Extension Act that was put in the legislature some years back when we had a slowdown in 2012.
Yes, after big developments started and so-
Right. And all special permits, variances, building permits, everything, was extended for a period of two years. So, but that's only in a rare occurrence, and it comes from the state house.
I remember when that happened.
Yeah. If we have another assertion, I may open again.
Do we need to make any motions on that or anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you could accept the, so, accept the timeframes that I discussed and allow me to edit the application, or I guess approve the application changes that I have made, and then allow me to make edits in the future.
Someone wanted to make that decision.
So what's your request for change?
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Change.
If I just may, have a friendly, um-
You notice I didn't even respond, did I?
I know, but you look, you look at me.
You caught that, didn't you?
I would only ask that you allow me to review it before it goes into print and out to the applicants, because if it, if I don't agree with it, I will not issue a building permit. So all I wanna do is just a chance to review it, just to make sure it doesn't conflict with what I-
Review this, review the whole entire package?
Yeah, and whatever edits, if you so allow the office manager to make, I'll just review them, just to make sure.
This isn't going to be in all applications. It's just what she's edited here now, right?
Yeah, everyone's different.
So, when you say to make changes on your end, what, what kind of changes? Are you talking just general administrative?
Formatting changes, so-
Okay, okay.
I, I do want it known, I'll put in, in case some other person has become secretary or something, that any notification or something like that has to be, we need to be, be made known of the change, maybe on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we already do hold all these variances for the one year and the two years on the special permits and-
Yeah, we are.
Like that. So what is it that we're actually changing?
What we're changing is the fact that we had a discussion as to what ones were which at another meeting, am I right? So she's clarifying it.
I got you, got you. Okay.
We all know this, but we couldn't remember which one was which.
Yeah, so we're still gonna follow mass law. We're just gonna try to figure out-
Presuming this is gonna be included in the permit package?
This is the permit package.
Okay, so that any applicant sees it in writing?
Correct.
I, I agree. I would just like the opportunity to make sure it doesn't conflict with what I believe in, cause I'm the one issuing the permits.
And you wouldn't refer them to us until, unless you have a discussion. Nobody comes before us, except through you.
Right.
Yep, I agree.
So we just need to make a motion on allowing the building commissioner to read or review this document and to make any necessary changes that he sees just-
I don't think-
I don't think-
No, not, not that much.
No, I-
The variance has to, has to be us.
Let's try this then. I'm gonna, I will make a motion, to move this along. I will make a motion that we authorize the office manager slash recording secretary, which has to do it all, all the time, to make a, to make the appropriate changes with regard to the variances and the- Special permits, as need to be done with regard to the permit applications going forward. And I would add to that, that any changes before they're etched in stone and in the final printed of the application, be also reviewed by the building inspector for the town.
A secondary motion. I had a motion made in secondary.
Is that covered?
It's already been secondary. I can't have this-
You wanna open it for discussion, have me go back?
Oh, I'm gonna open it for discussion now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. The motion, this is discussion. This will be fine.
Just don't lose that.
I think this is going- This is going way, way too far. We are giving up, you're really feeding way too much into this. All we need to do is accept it, the changes as written. And that's pretty much the way it needs to be done. And adding anything else, or adding, giving somebody other authority to make changes and stuff, there shouldn't be any of that. The board has to be notified or in the presence of the board while it's in session. It shouldn't be done as a discretionary thing. Does anybody wanna feed into that?
I, I, what I wanna say is, is that mass law, we've been following right along. Well, all we're trying to do is, when a case comes in front of Jim, at that point, certain ones, whether it's a special permit or the variance that he's requiring us to do, he wants to be able to, this area does fall under this, Nicole, at that point, will register that to come in front of our board for him. Is that how, that's pretty much what we're looking for?
Well, Greg, I, I, I heard what you said, but that's not what happens at all. Jim sends it to us because he needs a variance, or this person requires, this requires special permit or variance. It comes to us. Jim only needs to know, to know that the application, what's on the application, isn't asking for more than what is necessary for that particular case, but he'll know that when he gets it. But then he wouldn't have an application to us till they go through you.
Right.
This is really getting common.
Mr. Chairman, all I'm, all I'm suggesting by that motion is very simply that by making these changes, it keeps us in compliance.
I don't want the secretary making changes.
We just, we finish from-
It's that simple.
With the state, with, it keeps us in compliance with state law, and before the secretary can make the changes, to make sure that we're in compliance with law, she has to show it to, to the building inspector, to Jim.
I don't know where we're getting, you're getting, you're getting away from something.
Yeah, we're still in discussion?
Right, but you-
I don't wanna be solely responsible for what the application says. I just wanna look for conflicts with what I think the general law state, statutes, regulations, et cetera, et cetera. I think the board should be the entity to authorize or approve the change, any changes to the application. So, I think-
I don't even know why we even have any-
It should be just accepting the, the revised-
The revised means the way it's written. That's all it should be. Nothing else added.
That's what I, that's what I think too.
There shouldn't be like any amendments to the motion or anything. I think we're just accepting the fact that a special permit has to be renewed within two years, or variance has to be acted upon within one year with a six-month extension, pretty much.
I believe that's the way it is now.
Mr. Chairman, any of the edits on that paper are in a different color. They should-
All right, well, which one will be up here now? I had this one here, okay.
Do I get paid extra for pulling all this stuff out?
Somebody needs to. This is really not, really not necessary. All right, so what do you have to know?
It wasn't just any-
Seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Mr. Chairman, the application that's in front of you, any of the edits that I have made that we discussed at our last meeting are in red.
Right, right here.
They're, correct. There are edits regarding 750 per application. They're regarding the timelines for special permits and variances. They're regarding all of the discussion we've had previously about guiding the applicants to the bylaws online, and any sort of advice that they may need.
All right, Nicole, I have two things here to outline. All right, now go to another, All right, Nicole, another page here, that is blank.
Yep, and then Nicole, the next thing's there.
Anything that's red.
Attach them. All right, now, you're saying this is a tax status application thing?
That goes for the building permit, yep, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, the tax status application is part of the permit, I mean, part of the application.
So what are you looking to change there? Or why are we considering a change here? Because we were discussing something that was relative to how long a permit, a special permit law lasts and a variance lasts.
Correct.
Okay, so what does this have to do with what we were discussing under tax status? I'm not clear in this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, I presented the board this application with all of the edits in red. We went through each page and went through all of the edits. The only outstanding questions that the board had were regarding the timelines attached to the variance and the special permit. It was put as an advisory vote for me to look up this information for the board and bring it back before the board.
I'm going to have to step out, I'm going to blow a gasket here. What did I just say?
I...
That's what we have in front of us. We're going to accept the fact that this is, no other changes need to be made, no other amendments need to be...
As far as I understand it, yes. I don't, I remember some of the discussion from the last meeting. I don't remember if what was in red was acted on by the board.
That had nothing to do with what we were just, this might have been at the other meeting. We're not acting on this tonight, are we?
We're just approving the changes that we implemented, that we talked about last month.
Is this another change that we?
No, no, this is all based on...
I don't understand where we're going with this.
I think we, I think we discussed all this last time, because I can tell you almost verbatim that when that came up, I would have informed you. That's, that's general law, that's required for all permits when they apply to a municipality.
Right, we talked about that.
Right, so I think the only question, and I would agree with the office manager, is that the timelines needed to be verified, they've been verified. I just want to see the language after it's put into the application, just to make sure I'm okay with it, that's all.
And that's what my motion, that was the motion.
So we're just, we're just basically approving the changes that we discussed last month, that's all we're doing.
And to the chairman's point, he's not in favor of allowing a blanket vote that would allow changes to happen without the boards.
That's right.
Correct. I'm going to agree with that as well.
I don't know how that even got brought into the, into the picture here.
Okay, doesn't have to...
We can, we can change.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a point. The reason that I put that before the board last month and this month, this discussion here, is because small changes that may occur with various edits, like if I find grammatical errors or whatever, if you were to tell me, or if a board member were to tell me, we'd like to incorporate this, if Mary says, please include this tax form, small edits that happen in office managerial day-to-day, I would just incorporate it as opposed to coming before the board. But if you would like me to bring it before...
No, I'd like it to come, any decisions, the changes, bring it before the board.
Even grammatical stuff, I guess what she's getting at is grammatical stuff.
All right, you're going to have to give me, I don't know what grammatical means, someone's little...
Spelling errors.
Spelling errors, comp, you know, just, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, my, my motion, it's still out there.
You can make that kind of decision, Nicole, you don't need to vote on that. Spelling error.
That would be part of the vote that you would be making right now.
Well, why did it have to include the spelling errors? Why did it have to go into that kind of detail? Is that what you're telling me, you just, is that...
I, I'm not following you. I just think you keep it really simple. You agree to the changes that we discussed for two meetings?
I'm afraid of what we're doing here.
Mr. Chairman, my...
If there's any other changes, come just front of the board.
My motion does not negate anything that would go through the board at any time. All it, all it does very simply is it gives the office manager the authorization to make changes, and if necessary, to put other eyes on it from, from Jim as well, if there's a question mark or for clarification. It doesn't change anything else.
Can't change any rules.
It hasn't changed any rules or laws.
Mr. Chairman and the board, I'm not going to change mass general law, I'm trying to make sure that we're aligned to mass general law.
And that's the purpose of giving her...
The statements that I added in red give the applicant more information as to the timelines and various things they need to do in order to fill out the application, so we're all on the level.
This is just simply so that the two of them can work together if necessary, to bring back to us what we need.
I, if I may, I listened to your motion, Mr. Gale. I believe it's, it's too encompassing. I believe that the way it was said, you will be giving authorization to the office manager to make changes, and I, I think that's, that's an error. I don't think you should do that. I, I'm not asking you to withdraw, you're, you're, it's your board. But I, I think it should be amended so that the board has the final say in the changes to the application. I say that respectfully.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. Then I would, if I, if I go with the motion that I previously made, I would amend the motion to add that any subsequent changes or changes that are made by the office manager in consultation with the building inspector, how do you want me, be brought, be brought in front, be brought in front of the ZBA for approval prior to becoming permanent.
To me, this motion, we're still open for discussion on this motion?
Yep.
Like, this motion, as it's worded, goes far exceeds what is actually necessary on this permit application form. I mean, the application form now is gone, it's three, four, actually, it's only the two pages long. But other than the fact that we're going to accept what she did in her research, what Nicole did in her research, as far as the time date and stuff, which was a question that did come up, is what is really necessary, anything further than that on the post?
Okay. I'm trying, I'm trying to...
I'm trying to think how I want to do this here.
You can accept, you can accept the application as amended.
Seconded anyway.
Done. If I see any problems with it, I will come back to the board and ask you to revise.
He's got to withdraw his motion.
That's up to you, I'm just giving you my...
I know what I'm going to do.
If you, when I withdraw the motion, the amendment and the motion, and we'll start all over again, and I won't make it.
Bob, I make a motion that we accept.
First, we're going to let him withdraw his motion.
No, listen, I, I am withdrawing the amendment to the motion, which was not seconded, and I am withdrawing the motion, which was seconded, so we're starting from the ground zero.
Correct. Bob, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the zoning board of appeals application with the highlighted areas that are in red, to be accepted onto the new application. To meet also mass laws, which we have followed in the past, be attached to the new zoning application so that the petitioner may understand the rules that we follow.
All right, now, that mass general law, is that pertaining to each, each variance that they're asking for?
Each variance varies, and there is little articles in the need, states right in it, like on 1010, there's a little D note with 177, you go down a little D note, every, every case is different. And that's with Jim, at that point, you'll be able to say that that particular case meets, meets, you're going to have to go in front of the board, or this particular case, you're not going to have to go in front of the board, which you get the point, we'd be talking with Nicole, and Nicole could read out stuff that we need to have in here. But that's what I, I'm, I'm willing to accept the zoning board of appeals application.
Judge of motion?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chairman, would you like me to include a website link to the mass general laws?
I think just a copy of something like this attached to it.
A link would be the best thing, wouldn't cost anybody anything, they just go themselves.
Well, mass general laws, well...
See?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman and the board, mass general laws are extensive. Do you want me to print out the entire mass general?
No, I do not. We follow these laws, Nicole, right here that you have in front of us anyways. This is more for a petitioner to understand the laws, that's all. So that's where the unclarification's coming in. We've already followed these laws.
Correct. I guess my clarification is, how would you like me to attach the reference?
I would like this to be done exactly the way you did it. You can do it in your own typing words, mass law, 1010, let me finish, as it states here, that's pretty much what we follow, or how long it takes for us to hold that law. And then when we go to special permits, same thing. I don't see what the big deal is, this application is nothing that we haven't done in the past. I really don't.
That's why the motion measures stated, Greg, as accepting it the way it is, adding the mass general laws...
Only on the special permit, and only on...
Like you said, mass general law is really extensive.
I just say right after, Bob, I'm not willing to write that, not that, just special permit variances, so that the people as the petitioner, that when they get these from our board, when they get it from our boards, and now they can say, all right, you do know you only have one year to go down to the registry deeds and do this and get a permit.
Oh, is that what you're asking for, just something that simply states that that?
What they're, this is what it's for, for the petitioner, am I right? Nicole, to understand what we're following.
Correct. The petitioner will get that.
Not us, the petitioner.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to...
I'll second that motion.
...vocabulary, I'm fine with that.
All right, so we run the motion so we get it in the record.
I make a motion.
Okay.
That the board accepts the new zoning board of appeals application with all areas highlighted in red, with attached mass law on special permit 1010, on special permit, I'm sorry, on variance, let me say that right, variance, special permits and...
Yeah, it's all 1010.
Yeah, and variances.
Yep.
I just want to accept this application right here.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
You got it. Any discussion?
We do know that it's just for the applicant.
Right.
It's not, it's unchanging anything. That's all I want, everybody to understand what I can't do.
What you're going to give them is that rule that expires in one year, two years on a special permit.
Which is a mass law, nothing is changed.
And I, I don't need to review that, because if you're citing general law, I'm not going to argue that, so, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
That was fun.
No, it's not done again. It's been this way for months, months.
Five.
What's next?
Citizen Planet Training Collaborative Classes. You know what I think about this? I ain't know nothing about this.
Joe, let's, Tim...
Mr. Ryan's and Mr. Gale.
Okay.
Joe, I'll defer to you first.
Okay.
Thanks. Before I do the first, I'll do the second.
So basically, this was the, the class that Tim and I went to, which really kind of, it kind of focused, you know, if you're more familiar with what a town's supposed to do, and when, and open meeting regulations and procedures, and policies and procedures for the way records are supposed to be kept, or held, or imaged, or having what it takes to have quorums, and what's involved with public meetings, in terms of posting, and how, which notice you have to give, I've covered all this in a short amount of time, for different types of meetings, or different types of hearings, and what the requirements are when you have production of documents, so that if a resident comes to the town hall and asks them to provide them information, or otherwise for disclosure of something that's occurred one year, two year, three year, five year, what the requirements are, what records we have to keep, and this is for anything in the town, not just this committee really, that's really what this all covered. So it was, I would say, a broad overview of what the responsibilities of anyone who works within a town and is governed by state law, federal law, has to, has to follow with regard to procedure. It also, to some extent, went into conflict of interest as well, and then it also discussed the types of committees you can serve on, and when you, with regard to that, what you can serve on, and when you have to refuse yourself, such as I did earlier for that other item. Conflict of interest, if you have business with the town, or potential family members who have business with the town as well. Discuss the difference between stipends versus, you know, volunteerism, et cetera. So really, again, it was a wide overview. One of the things that I thought was interesting, and I know that the town is, is looking at this somewhat already, and Jim, I know that Jim's already involved in this, is digitalizing records, and what's involved in doing that, and how expensive it could be, and how much of a difference it can make, and how long you have to hold on to the records once you digitalize them, or don't have to hold on to them anymore. And that's one of the things I was surprised about, is that once you digitalize records, the old paper records don't have to necessarily be held on to any more than three years in most cases, in some cases, seven years, but beyond that, you don't have to keep that old stuff. And if somebody wants things like that, if you can legitimately show that those records were destroyed without prejudice necessarily, but because they were digitalized or something like that, and you can't produce paper documents anymore, you're fully justified. It also talked, we also had a discussion about the responsibility of different committees with regard to working with the attorneys that represent a town, and the discovery process, if committee members want to know things for background versus residents wanting to know things from background, and going into executive sessions, what can be discussed, what can't be discussed in executive session. So I think I've covered a fair amount.
I would say so.
Joe, you got anything to add?
The first night, the first evening that we attended was, a lot of it was in regards to duties of the planning board, and how they receive formates, how plans are presented to the planning board, discussions they need to have with their engineers, that type of thing. And that was basically what the first day was. It didn't have a lot to do with ZBA issues. For the first day, it was pretty much planning issues, and 40B. So 40B was covered briefly.
So my question, would you find it informative? Was it worth the trip?
In regards to the first half, I'll speak for myself, in regards to, you know, what other boards do in regards to the planning, and what the duties and responsibilities, I would say yes. In regards to the second evening, no, because it was open meeting laws, and we all get a packet from our town clerk or our boards or committees we serve on. There was nothing really new, and any of the information was provided that evening. Just a little bit of clarification outside.
And I think the same thing, the second session, I think, was meant to go into more detail, but it didn't, I mean, they didn't tell us anything that we didn't know, but it was just a matter of maybe reiterating it. First one, I thought was kind of, was a little more interesting.
When I came on board, Joe Pacheco handed me this book right here, and it's Massachusetts General Law, which, Land News, which has pretty much everything you said in it, in any of the other board members. If you have reference to something specific, you can find usually the answers, they're in the book. To go to a class like that and have them, you know, address the issues one night after another, no, but it definitely gives you a, a step up as to having to go into, but it's all pretty much the different governing bodies, who the players are, was, you know, how the law is done and how it's represented, each question.
Yeah.
And I refer to it a lot of times even today, when questions go up, because you can't always just run up and find the answer.
I think for somebody who's, who's new to it, at least in this town like myself, I think it was a good refresher.
Obviously.
Honestly, it was. And it was worth doing.
No, because I can remember going over most of everything you said.
Yep.
At some point in the last eighteen years. Okay, next. Any further discussion? Okay, this is six, now, policy discussion change. Okay, what is that, policy discussion? Is that about the...
Mr. Chairman, you brought this up in the first five minutes of the meeting.
Right, we got that taken care of, okay. All right, now, the next one is seven, seven member. I was asked about this, and asked to have this put on, that is a discussion, to have a seventh member. I referred Nicole to, I didn't think we had the authority to hire or create a position as a board ourselves, so I asked her to, you know, look into it, and she spoke to Mallory about it, and Mallory thought that it would be enough of a reason to break the tie, but Mallory doesn't realize that we only have three voting members anyway, so that the seventh, adding a seventh person wouldn't be a reason for a hire, I don't think. I myself think this was six, a six-member board. In recent years, we've always managed to get at least five people there every night.
Well, I had a question regards to that, when I had looked at this, is that if you did put on a seventh member, that would change your quorum rules to four members, four out of seven would be a quorum, would no longer be three.
Three.
It changes the quorum amount drastically. So then you'd have to have four voting members in regards to a seven-member town.
I wasn't aware of that.
Then you would have a tie. Then you, then you had that tie.
I have one question about it, if we, if we're coming on saying we are a seven-member board...